Restored to the Office of Public Committee Act, Chapter 31, Public List, 1975. This meeting has been duly advertised in the Edbury Pop Press, issue of August 3rd, 2017. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and will require us to post new notices as well. I need a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Bankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Massinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Ferdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Terry?
So, it's time to stay.
One question?
Oh.
Just one.
Yeah, just, thank you, just one item in addition to the items listed on the agenda for tonight that we discussed in the second session. We would also discuss, excuse me, under reception number seven, the matter of document number A-012778-17.
Communication, our intended office of the Board Secretary.
Thank you, Mrs. Terry. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our student recognition awards. First and foremost, thank you for coming out. I know it's a very busy time of year, but one of the reasons that we scheduled this at the last board meeting before the new year is really come together and have a meeting that's celebratory in nature and focuses on all the good deeds that our students are doing in the classroom, on the athletic field, in the extracurricular environment. And just a note before we get started, you know, this tends to be, in the week leading up to the holiday break, it tends to be one of the more stressful times of the year for our students, for parents, those of you who are here this evening, you know, you obviously take the time to stand out in some part of your life here at the Field Regional High School District, and that means you're busy, and that means that you might be feeling a little bit stressed and a little bit zapped as we head into the holiday. Take a moment to take a breath, right? Just take a moment to take a breath, catch your breath. Moms and dads, take a moment to spend a few more minutes with your children. I've been talking to a lot of students in the schools over the past couple of weeks. This is a really difficult time, especially for our seniors and juniors, and it's a real busy time, so let's just make sure as a community we take care of each other, okay? We're going to open up with Manalapan High School this evening, so I'd like to call Dr. Angelo Ziozzi and Mr. Taylor to the podium.
Good evening. I would first like to thank the Board of Education, the Central Office Administration, and Mr. Sampson for honoring our schools and our students this evening. Additionally, I would like to congratulate all of the other district medal recipients. Now, let's get started with the awards. I would first like to recognize the following six students for reaching the rank of Eagle Scout and the Boy Scouts of America. Luke Altamora, Thomas Arroyo, Brian Beaker, Christian Fitzgerald, Luke Mazada, and Antonio Mora. These young men have mastered the required scouting skills, completed an array of merit badges, completed their Eagle Scout project, and have passed their Eagle Scout Board of Review. They have demonstrated leadership, organizational skills, self-reliance, exemplary character, good citizenship, and sound judgment. A brief description of their individual Eagle Scout projects are as follows. Luke refurbished an unusable pathway at his church, which is now an area that can be used for multiple activities. Thomas created lending library boxes for the community at three locations throughout town. Brian repaired and restored Revolutionary War fencing at Craig House on Route 9. Christian constructed nine movable platforms for the Braves marching band. Luke restored existing picnic tables and constructed three new ones for the township at Holiday Park. And Antonio refurbished trails and made two new trail markers at Monmouth Battlefield State Park. Congratulations, gentlemen. Next up, the National Merit Commended Recipients from Manalapan High School, which includes the following 23 students. Brian Gu, Ariel Rakabitsky, Elena Dice, Rebecca Gilfoyle, Chloe Halad, Aviva Kern, Yashiel Pandia, Max Schustep, Aditya Juturi, Ellie Gabriel, Sanidi Gharal, Spencer Goldberg, Neil Gopani, Zoriana Harhas, Howard Lai, Noel Matthew, Brandon Rishi, and Lauren Tucker. The following students could not be with us this evening. Thomas Gu, David Lau, Justin Esposito, Kenneth Erickson, and Evan Vitaglia. Based on PSAT selection index scores, out of 1.6 million entrants in the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Program, these 19 students are in a pool of approximately 34,000 students to be commended in the National Merit Scholarship Program. That represents a little less than 2% of all PSAT takers. Additionally, four of these students, two with us this evening, are earned the distinction of semifinalists. I'm going to ask those students to please step forward. I believe it's Brian Gu and Ariel Rakabitsky. Of those 34,000 students commended in the program, half of those move on in the competition. They're the highest-scoring entrants in each state and are eligible to apply to become National Merit finalists. Congratulations to Evan, Justin, Brian, and Ariel for this accomplishment. I'm going to ask a few students to stay up here. I'm going to ask Ariel Rakabitsky, Elena Dice, Rebecca Gilfoyle, Chloe Halad, Aviva Kern, David Lau, Yashiel Pandia, Max Schustep, and Aditya Juturi to stay up here, please. Everyone else can head back to their seats. Thank you. I'd like to allow Vina Twala to come down to join the students in the front of the room. Tala, are you here? There he is. All the way in the back, of course, but we'll wait. As noted previously, Evan Vitaglia, Kenneth Erickson, and Thomas Gu could not be with These students are being recognized as National AP Scholars. The AP Scholar Awards recognize high school students who have demonstrated exemplary college-level achievement on AP exams. The designation of National AP Scholar is granted to students in the United States who receive, this is big, an average score of at least four on all P exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. Congratulations. And I've got this worked out. I'm going to ask Aditya to stay up here, and everyone else can head back to their seats. But he's not going to be alone. Will the following eight students join? Please join me at the front of the auditorium. Ellie Gabriel, Brian Gu, William Kane, Landon LeBrand, Alexander Przyzynski, Raul Sharma, Noah Bennett, and Anthony Atkinson. Again, Kenneth Erickson could not be with us tonight. These students all scored a perfect 800 in mathematics on their SATs. Unlike some other national exams that are curved, in the math section of the SAT, you can pretty much assume that you must get every question correct to achieve a perfect 800. Well done. And nobody has to stay up here this time. Thank you. And finally, for me, anyway, I'd like to recognize Erin Walsh. Erin, come on down here, please, all by yourself. We are recognizing Erin tonight for her gold medal performance at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Fall Conference. Seven FCCLA members attended the Fall Leadership Conference on November 20th, and the day was filled with educational workshops, along with some fierce competition and community service. Erin Walsh's entry in the Passion for Fashion category finished in first place. Congratulations. And now, I will turn the program over to the supervisor of extracurricular activities from Manalapan High School, Mr. Rodney Taylor.
Thank you, Dr. Angelo Ziozzi, and good evening, everyone. First, I'd also like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Sampson, and the Central Office Administration for supporting and honoring our schools and students this evening. In addition to the recipients that are already mentioned from Manalapan High School, I would like to recognize two members of our marching band. Can Zachary Smone and Claudia McCray please come down? These two band members were selected from a very talented pool of musicians to play with the Macy's Great American Marching Band at the annual Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. This band is comprised of musicians from across the United States and honors America's finest high school musicians. Zachary, who is on tenor sax, and Claudia, percussionist, were selected as two of the 185 musicians from across the country to represent their school. Great job, Zachary and Claudia. And next, I'd like to recognize six members of the 2017 A-North Division Chance Football Team from Manalapan High School. Please come down. That would be Naeem Mayfield, Trevor Redosovich, Samir Blacknall, Antonio Deezo, Thomas Pierce, and Sal Tardona. Each year, head coaches from each division get together to nominate and select the league players to represent their division. This year, there were 14 Manalapan players who were selected to the all-division team. Of those 14, these three and the three who are missing, total of six, gentlemen, were also nominated to represent the entire Shore Conference by achieving first-team All-Shore honors. Congratulations to Sal, Antonio, Samir, Tommy, Naeem, and Trevor, who could not be here. Out of these three who are standing, in addition to Mr. Naeem Mayfield, who couldn't make it tonight, Trevor Redosovich, if you could please step forward. Trevor was also honored, not only first-team All-Shore, first-team All-Division, but he was also recognized as first-team All-State for leading the wave to the rushing attack that Manalapan Grace hosted this year. Great job. I'd like to thank you all this evening, and thank you for Manalapan High School.
So, folks, one of the things you'll notice is, as the recognition is discussed for the first time, the principal and or the seaker will go through the explanation of what that honor is, so as we go through that the first time, we take care to do that. Now, I'd like to call them Howell High School, Mr. Brogman.
As Mr. Sampson said, I'm Mr. Brogman, the principal of Howell High School. I too would like to thank the superintendent, Board of Education, Central Office, and congratulate all the recipients that are here this evening and their families. I have the distinct honor to recognize some members of our TSA, which is our Technology Student Association. What I'd like to do is call up or have everybody come up who is part of our TSA, so I can speak about them, so if you're here from TSA, please come up. Thank you. Okay, so, like I said, TSA is the Technology Student Association. This past fall, we won three state championships in New Jersey for the TSA. First, the Junior/Senior State Design Challenge, which was held at the College of New Jersey. Again, we earned first place, and the members of that team, when I say your name, please step forward. Kayla Devosa, Deanna Lucas, Michael Gomes, James Caffaro, Robert Wetzel, and Giovanni Belfieri. Great job. Next, we were first place in the New Jersey State TSA State Halloween Door Decorating Contest, and to receive that award was our captain, Kayla Devosa. And lastly, another first-place championship for our design challenge at the College of New Jersey, and our officers for that team were President Kayla Devosa, Vice President Dimitri Allen, Secretary Deanna Lucas, Treasurer James Ginni, Reporter David Wagenblast, Sergeant at Arms Thomas Boty, Historian Giovanni Belfieri, and Politician Robert Wetzel. Congratulations to Miss Moses and our TSA. Thank you.
Folks, I know that it's a busy time. We're going to move through it relatively quickly. What I'd ask is that folks from schools who have already been awarded the medals, if you could kindly just sit for the other schools, that would be really, really awesome, because I think you'll be impressed with what your classmates and peers have accomplished.
As Dr. Angelo Ziozzi spoke earlier in regards to the commended scholars, he reviewed what that criteria is to move things along. I'm not going to repeat that, as he said it so eloquently. We had four commended scholars this year. First, Mr. Josh Ricklin, Sarah Recari, Catherine Sorrentino, and Ava Stiles. Congratulations. We have two athletes in football this year, first-team All-Shore, and one of these athletes was also second-team All-State and honorable mention All-State. The first athlete I'd like to call up was our quarterback. Again, he was first-team All-Shore, and he was an honorable mention for All-State, and did it all on the field for us, a quarterback, and led us to a successful season this year, Mr. Eddie Morales. And next, first-team All-Shore, second-team All-State. This young man played wide receiver. He was also punt return, kick return, and defense. Phenomenal season as well, Mr. Nazee Brantley. Next, athlete at Howell High School was first-team All-Shore from cross-country, ran 19 and change at the Central Jersey Group Four Championships, placed third, and was 20th in the meet of champions. Again, first-team All-Shore, TJ Hiller. I think he's running. Okay, next, we have, for the first time ever at Howell High School, three first-team All-State cheerleaders. I'd like to call them up one at a time. First, Morgan Diaz, Olivia Ramos, and Paige Rizley. Thank you, ladies. And lastly, from our chorus, the winners of the New Jersey Rising Star High School Classical Music Competition. First up, Maya Benharush, Alexa Chalmick, Mikaela Long, Ciara DiMeolo, and Carrie Golfar. And that concludes the awards for Howell High School. Thank you, Mr. Brogman. And I'd now like to call up Dr. Bleak Lee from Marlboro High School, Mr. Ryden.
Good evening, everybody. I'd also like to thank our Board of Education members, Mr. Sampson, our superintendent, and our Central Office staff, for all the work that they do in support of our students, and congratulations to all the recipients from all the high schools and their families. At Marlboro High School, we're going to start with our National Merit Commended Students. We had 26 students who met that criteria, most of whom are with us tonight. I'll read all the names. Please come up as I hear your name. Priya Agarwal, Sandeep Alankar, Jacqueline Alex, Argava Arnala, Gabrielle Brandwee, Ravatage Chilakuri, Shreya Das, Ralph DePalma, Rohan Gohel, Alexandra Shroob, Rachel Wong, Art Janney, Alyssa Juziki, Brandon Luw, Amanda Ma, Zoya Munzar, Shreya Naraparaj, Adarsh Patel, Nikita Patton, Aditya Rahavan, Adaruth Rahavan, Pooja Rejith, Noah Schneider, Ryan Wang, Gavin Weimer, Anthony Wu, and Nicholas Zheng. We also had five of these students achieve the criteria for National Merit semifinalists, so those of you that are here with us tonight, I'd ask you to step forward. Shreya Das, Brian Luw, Shreya Naraparaj, Ryan Wang, and Anthony Wu. At Marlboro High School, we also had 14 students that achieved a perfect score on the math section of the SAT, so I'll read those names. Please come up to the front. Nathaniel Bolinkis, Andre Chang, Ravatage Chilakuri, Ralph DePalma, Thomas Adrelly, Brandon Laner, Shreya Naraparaj, Aaron Nath, Aditya Prasad, Aditya Rahavan, Adaruth Rahavan, Noah Schneider, and Anisha Singal. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ryden.
Thank you, Dr. Bleak Lee. Is Max Bogner in the audience? Come on down, Max. Max is our Eagle Scout recipient from Marlboro High School, and his service project was he built benches and placed them in the garden at his campus. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call down Hannah Lee, Noah Lee, and Eric Chen. These are our recipients of our region two ensembles for band, Noah's Sinfonic Band, Hannah's Sinfonic Band, and Eric Chen was orchestra. And lastly, I'd like to call down Melissa Astorita. This is Melissa's fourth medal ceremony in her four years at Marlboro High School. In the Shore Conference Tournament, she placed second all-around, second place on the floor, fourth place on the vault, and the bounce beam, eighth place on the bars. In the Central Jersey State Sectional Tournament, she was the all-around champion, second place on bars, set a new school record, which she holds all of them, as a 9.67, second place on beam, third place on the floor and vault. In the state tournament, she was second place all-around, second place on bars, third place on beam, floor, and vault. She is a four-time first-team All-Shore gymnast. She is a four-time first-team All-State gymnast. She's also been invited to represent New Jersey on the New Jersey Gymnastics Team that will compete at the national tournament in Florida. She's also going to Penn State University on a full athletic scholarship.
Thank you, Dr. Bleak Lee and Mr. Ryden. Now, I'd like to call Mrs. Jewel up from Field High School.
Again, good evening, everyone, and congratulations. You know, I've done this, listened to this for several years now, and it is always remarkable, the talent that this regional district has and the variety of the talent. Congratulations to everyone here tonight, and thank you to everyone who had a part in this. The Borough had twenty-three commended students in the 2018 National Merit Program. As I call your name, please come down, and you can start through this way and make your way across that way. Those present this evening, Nicholas Aiello, Anthony Arcio, Dylan Castor, Crystal Chu, Dominic DiMaggio, Jake Oklea, Stephen Foley, Jacqueline Poe, Zachary Isaacson, Caitlin Mahou, Matthew Laxer, Margaret Moorhead, Mia Patel, Medha Panakulali, Dia Sethi, Amanda Tran, and Dana Tran. The following students also achieved commended for coming out be here this evening, Salvatore DiMaggio, Dan Gollum, Justin Luen, Ryan McElvein, Yeyang Park, and Anaruth Patel. Congratulations to these students.
Go to walk.
Thank you. The Borough had two National Merit semifinalists, Anisha Dada and Melissa Haw. Thank you, ladies. In the world of athletics, one of our students, our student athletes, Isabella Renoso and Coach Donna Hein, if you could come down, please. Bella Renoso, as we fondly call her at the Borough, is Friel Borough's field hockey goalie. She's been the starting goalie since her sophomore year, and this year earned the following achievements: Shore Conference All-Star Division Team, she played in the Shore Conference All-Star Senior Game; most notably, she received first-team All-Shore and second-team All-State Group III. She led the Colonials to Class A North and NJSIAA North Group III State Sectional Title in 2016. She is currently undecided about where she will be playing next year. However, powerhouse hockey programs such as the College of New Jersey, Lock Haven, and CW Post are all actively recruiting Bella. Congratulations. You couldn't pick up the Asbury Park Press this season without seeing the next athlete all over the pages. He had an incredibly, incredible season, and he did so much for the Borough. I asked Ashanti Worthy and Coach Mike D'Antonio to come down. Ashanti, and I'm gonna, I'm so proud of him. I really am. He did so much for our school, and we had such awesome Saturday football games and Friday night football games. And we started in August, and we finished up there in Rutgers in a heartbreaker. But man, what a season we had. Ashanti made first-team All-State offense this year. He is the only player in state history to rush 2,000 yards and pass for 2,000 yards in a single season. He was the recipient of the 2017 Jersey Sports Zone Trophy for New Jersey State Player of the Year. He was the Shore Sports Network Shore Conference Player of the Year. He was the News 12 varsity first-team All-State utility player, Asbury Park first-team All-Shore quarterback, A-North Offensive Player of the Year. He now holds the state records in rushing for 2,860 yards and the single-season combined passing and rushing record of 4,966. In a single season, a single season, he scored sixty-one touchdowns. Coach Ellis, the head varsity coach, couldn't be there, would be here this evening if there's a family's medical situation going on home, but I do want to acknowledge the time that Coach Ellis put into this football season. And here instead is Coach Mike D'Antonio, who also had a large part of our season. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Jewel. I'd now like to call Mrs. Higley from Friel Township High School up.
Good evening. I also would like to congratulate all the students who are in attendance tonight for being recognized for their outstanding achievements, and I would also like to thank their parents for all the support they have provided to our students that make an evening like this possible, along with our superintendent and Board of Education. We are proud of how well the students in the Friel Regional High School Districts perform in the SAT, and I also have a senior who had a perfect score in the math section, Leah Lunico. We'd also like to congratulate our six commended students for the National Merit Scholarship, Mia Agarwal, Joyce Hung, Mia Khan, Rhea Prasad, and Max Torres. We also have... We also have two Eagle Scouts, Leigh Green cannot count, but he was honored with the Butter of the Arrow Award in September 2016 after building benches and a fire pit with paving stones at Camp Sacagawea, a local girl scout camp. Also, Brent Anderson. Brent is here, you're good. Brent is also a senior that has been scouting since he was twelve years old, and scouting attracted Brett because of his opportunity to spend time with the friends and do things he enjoyed. Brent built a prayer garden at the Prince of Peach Church at Howe. He fundraised money for the project. He also painted the deck and platform for the church. In addition to earning Eagle Scout, Brent has earned twenty-one badges and is a Denji. Congratulations. And before I introduce Mr. Prasad, who entered the second in the program, I do want to say a shout-out to our all athletes at Friel Township High School. Six of our eight teams ended up being in the top ten in the Shore Conference, which is a first for our high school.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley. I want to start out by calling up a few of our musically inclined students. These they do things that I could never even imagine. First, we have five students that were selected to the All-Shore course. Girls and ladies and gentlemen, you can come up down or call your names. We have Lexi Santatoro. Mrs. Conner said Lexi cannot be here tonight, but I believe the other four are Riley Martin, Alyssa Granito, Danny Skurbo, and Caleb Zedding. Congratulations, Mrs. Zedding. You guys can stand up for her for a few minutes. We also have two members of our band that earned individual acclaim in the first half of the school year, Andrew Solaro. Andrew, if you're here, if there is, come on up. He plays the oboe, and he was named All Region Band and Percussion Ensemble by the Central Jersey Music Educators Association. And then I'll have him stand here while I talk about Amabel Kim. I don't think Amabel's out there this evening. But Amabel is a senior at our school, and she earned All-State Orchestra honors as a violinist. And as a member of the All-State Orchestra, she was able to perform at the Teachers Convention in Atlantic City on November tenth, and then again at the NJPAC in Newark on November nineteenth. So congratulations to our five members of our band. Athletically, we had individual and team accomplishments. Mrs. Higley already alluded to the team accomplishments. I'll get to that in a minute. Kevin Finn was a boys soccer player. I don't believe he's here this evening. If he isn't, this is what happens when you don't come to my office and tell me you're here. Kevin is a midfielder and played a great role on our division-winning boys soccer team. He was a captain. He was named first-team All-Shore. He was also named All-Division. And then Nick Ackerman is a cross-country runner for us. Nick is here. He was also named first-team All-Shore. In addition to that, at our divisional batch meet that we held right across the street at Bucksmill, Nick was the A-North and district individual champion and helped lead our boys to the district and public division championship this year. So thank you, guys, and congratulations. All right. At this time, fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess, depending on how you look at it, Coach Patterson was able to make it out here tonight. Coach Patterson is the head coach of our state champion girls soccer team. I'm gonna ask Kim and the girls soccer team to come on up, because I have to rattle off a lot of accolades for this team. So our boys soccer team finished the season 23-1-1. They were division champions, they were Shore Conference finalists, and they were Group Four champions. As they come up and they're getting their medals, a few individuals to note that earned individual accolades. Sarah Hughes was named first-team All-Shore by the Asbury Park Press. Jacob and Jasmine Culver were also named first-team All-Shore. They were named first-team All-Group Four, they were named first-team All-State, and they were named Co-Players of the Year for the Shore Conference by the Star-Ledger. Congratulations, girls and Coach Patterson. Great season. I know they sat there for a while, so I'm gonna kind of make it worth their while, specifically speaking to the seniors. This was an outstanding group of seniors that we have on this team. I spoke to Coach Patterson and the assistants, and this is one of those once-in-a-lifetime groups that you get together, and the accomplishments that they had on the field are not even close to what they deserve going forward. So thank you, girls, for a great season, and all the best in your career. All right, last but not least, our gymnastics team. Coach Sabaka is here tonight, representing our coaches down. I'm gonna ask Coach Sabaka and any of the girls that are in attendance to come on up. This is another team that had an absolutely outstanding season. I think with the girls soccer team, these two groups of girls had the best season in school history for their respective sports. The gymnastics team was undefeated in regular season matches. They won the division. They finished second at the Shore Conference Meet, second at the Sectional Meet, and for one of the largest public school districts, I will highlight the fact that we were the best public high school gymnastics team everywhere we went this entire season. Two times we finished second over Saint John Vianney. So I'm very proud of the girls for that. And at the end of the day, in November, we won the overall state championship at the group meet, and we are New Jersey State Champions, so congratulations to the team. Two girls that I'd like to point out for individual recognition while they're up here, and if you step forward when I call your name, Jamie Collinette. There's Jamie here, she's left. So I don't want to talk about her then. No, just kidding. As just a freshman, she won the balance beam event at the state sectional meet, and she was named second-team All-State by the Star-Ledger. And then Alexis Rogers, a junior from the Alexis High School, had a lot of accolades she got. First-team All-Shore by the Asbury Park Press, first-team All-State by the Star-Ledger. Congratulations, girls. Great season. Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Prasad, and thank you, Mrs. Higley. Now I'd like to call up Dr. Donahue and Mr. Ardell from Colts Neck High School.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sampson. I'd like to first say thank you to Mr. Sampson, the Central Administration, and our Board of Education for their support of all of our student programs here in Friel Regional High School District. And as you can see tonight by the impressive display, we have a multitude of outstanding programs here. And secondly, congratulations to not only all of our students but their parents on all of your accomplishments in the first part of the school year. Tonight, I have the pleasure of bringing up, first, our National Merit Commended Scholars. So when I call your name, please approach the podium. Jacqueline Albury. Sarah Duong. Charlotte Apple. Thearia Islam. Kayla Jung. Marshall Sen. And Justin Weiss. We had eight total National Merit Commended Students and Scholars this year. We also had three National Merit semifinalists, so when I call your name, please come down. Kristin Gambardella. Megan Jane. And Jacqueline Mixman. Thank you. I would like to introduce Mr. Ardell, our supervisor of extracurricular activities, to present some of our athletic awards tonight.
But first, I'd like to thank Mr. Sampson, Central Administration, and Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to recognize the academic and athletic achievements of our students tonight. But I'd also like to congratulate the administration, coaches, and parents, and students from our fellow district schools. You should all be very proud of what you've accomplished. I'd like to start off by calling down two members of our girls soccer team, Lauren Feaster and Kayla Lee. Lauren and Kayla have been a big part of the success of Colts Neck High School girls soccer over the past...
over the past two years. They are... Well, first, I'll start with Lauren. She's a four-year letter winner. She was named first team all shore this year, and she will be continuing her soccer career and academic career at Monmouth University in the fall, or I'm sorry, in 2018. Kayla Lee, also a four-year letter winner, also named to first team all shore. She was also named to the high school All American team for a soccer game in early December. Unfortunately, she was injured and was unable to play in that game. She will continue her soccer and academic career at Columbia University in 2018. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call down the Colts Neck High School field hockey team. With a seventeen win, two loss, and one tie record, Colts Neck Field Hockey achieved several program landmarks this year. The team captured their first divisional title by winning the A North Division and their first ever state sectional title by winning North Two, Group Three. Coach Marucci, both banners have arrived. They're in my office. They will be displayed in the gym. Members of the team are Lily Crock, Isabella Rivera, Gabriela Cataldo, Isabella Ferrandino, Madison Flynn, Stephanie Lanano, Jenna Philingeri, Helen Keachlin, Taylor Shandall, Gemma Shoyer, Kayla Wade, Elizabeth Whalen, Madison Bellows, Amy Flood, Amy McGee, Ariana Mascara, Teresa O'Keefe, Allison Boyle, and manager Victoria Ackerman. I'd like to ask Madison Bellows to take a step forward. Madison was named Class A North Player of the Year. She was also named second team all shore and third team all group three. Congratulations to that. At this time, I'd like to call down the Colts Neck High School Boys Cross Country Team. It has become a bit of a norm to announce this team during a district medal ceremony. For the fourth straight year and sixth in school history, Colts Neck Boys Cross Country won the Central Jersey Group Three State Championship. Members of the team are Matt Bogdan, Matt Hartman, Jack Hayes, Liam Hoagland, Kyle Roder, Matt Schaefer, Aiden Tucker. And Matt Hartman made third team all group three, while Matt Schaefer was named to the second team all group three team. Congratulations to that. At this time, I'd like to call down the Colts Neck High School Girls Cross Country Team. It looks like the boys program, the girls cross country team has firmly established themselves as a state power. This year, the girls captured both the Central Jersey Group Three and the overall Group Three state titles. This is their second straight group title and fifth in school history. Members of the team are Katie Anderson, Veronica Benat, Lucy Gardner, Amy Gibson, Colleen Meglerly, Delia Russo, Kavita Shaw, and Natalie Shapiro. I'd like to ask Natalie, Eva, Delia, and Colleen to take a step forward. Natalie was named third team all group three. Eva Gibson was named second team all group three. Delia Russo, first team all shore and second team all group three, and Colleen Meglerly, first team all shore and second team all group three. Coaches Joe Likes and Jim Schlence were named co-coach of the year for the short conference girls cross countries. Congratulations to them. And that concludes the district medals for Colts Neck High School.
Thank you, folks. We will take a quick two-minute recess and come back on radio. We can report before we move on to the auditors. So just a couple items that I want to go and take public on. December first, we were fortunate to have the Assistant Commissioner of Schools, Mr. Robert Rumpf, and the Executive County Superintendent, Dr. Ritz, Dr. Richards, do a site visit to our school district. And they visited a couple buildings and a number of programs and talked to a number of our students, and the students were absolutely fantastic. And the origin of this came about because the Assistant Commissioner had come out a couple years ago to meet with Mr. Boyce and I and talk about the logistics of places for start times and bus routes and transportation. We ended up in this sort of several hour overview of how the district operates and some of our programs. And he was fascinated by those and asked definitely, had time permitting, if he could visit the district. And so that happened on this day, first of all. We were real proud to showcase a few of our buildings to him, and they spent the entire day here really... The best part of the day was that they talked to a significant number of students about their experiences and came away incredibly impressive for the work that we do here in the district. We also had a powerful evening on November twenty-ninth in our strategic planning process. You know, many of you know that we are engaged in, you know, sort of the next steps to finish our five-year plan compass, which was an ambitious plan, but we've done some things a little differently this time around, and we're really integrating student voice and some real-time feedback as much as possible into those processes. And a component of that feedback included occurred on November twenty-ninth where we had about sixty-five members, students, parents, and community members come together under our four threads of the plan and offer us some real powerful, poignant feedback that we've taken to begin to really finalize the plan. You know, that's the one of the final steps of feedback that we've solicited that have included dozens and dozens of student groups, a number of surveys, a lot of data collection from all facets of the school community, students, parents, faculty members. And we feel real strong about the directions we're heading. And the plan will be more real-time than the last plan and have a couple of embedded opportunities over the course of an annual process to really offer insight and real-time feedback from folks that it's affecting. So I think there's some tremendous promise in the direction we're heading there. We're also planning to host a visit from the New Jersey Network of Superintendents at Sonic Foundation on January twelfth. Been a member of that network for nine years now, and one of the things that we hold each other accountable for is we conduct visits rounds of our districts, and we work on what we identify as problems of practice. And we ask this external group to come and really give us some unsolicited and honest feedback about how well we're working through that. In this context, they'll be coming to visit a number of our mathematics classes across the district to take a look at the teaching and learning that's occurring there, and we're really excited for the day. We had a preliminary meeting with those folks on Friday. Members of my administrative team, thank you for driving to Newark and thank you for the three hours of traffic on the way home. It was snowing, and apparently we somehow became an undeveloped country with a half inch of slush on the ground, but that happened, and I appreciate it. Our holiday concerts were tremendous once again, incredibly well attended across the district. We move forward on that. We are moving forward on a range of boot camps related to utilizing Google Apps for Education, Google Classroom, Google Certification. It's a free platform, and we've concentrated our training on that platform rather than continue to operate under multiple platforms. One of the feedback threads that we received from students that was quite powerful was that they prefer one platform, so we're moving in that direction to make life a little bit simpler. Another piece, you know, I wrote a blog that went a bit viral about the science assessment in New Jersey, and I want to be clear and public once again how fundamentally opposed I am as a superintendent and as a parent to how that assessment is being rolled out. The initial plans at this point are it will be a four-hour assessment given in the junior year, and it's in one of the most heavily tested windows for our students. You know, it comes on the heels of SATs, ACTs, advanced placement assessments, PARC assessments, and now you're going to roll a four-hour science assessment into that. And when we did the math, you know, from mid-April to mid-June, juniors alone are subject to somewhere around thirteen hours of testing, and it's just too much. And I said explicitly that standardized assessment, there's a place for standardized assessments. They can inform program development, they can identify gaps, certainly, but there's no need for students to spend thirteen hours between April and June of one school year taking standardized assessments. And I think the rollout is problematic. I think it's detrimental to our students, and I will remain vigorously opposed to it from my seat as superintendent of schools of the Freo Regional High School District. We're also, on Saturday, we just finished our intake assessments for our magnet programs across the district. One of the things that we saw this past year was that there was a dip in enrollment in some of our programs. We really looked at that. We attributed it to a number of factors. One, it seemed that the county vocational school district took more students than they have in the past to very particular programs, so there was a deeper cut into the students in this district. And we had a number of anomalies across the district where some of those programs were smaller than they had been in the past. We also took a deep dive over our enrollment process and what our cutoffs look like and what types of opportunities we might need to communicate to students sooner. And I think that the way we've rolled it out this year is cleaner and more efficient, and I would anticipate that our yields in our programs that have experienced a slight dip will see a return to normal numbers. And that concludes my report.
That's a good question.
Sure.
You had referenced the meeting we had about the strategic plan. My question, well, I have a question that I had to answer, but my question is, who was the person or people who decided we're going to be the facilitators of the individual groups?
It's a real... That was a collaborative process, you know, ultimately myself and Dr. Hazel.
Well, the point I'm trying to make with this question is, you really must be congratulated because with respect to the group that was facilitated by Dr. Lee and Nancy Bailey was about communication with the public. And I guess I wasn't in a talkative mood at that meeting, and I really didn't want to... I guess I wasn't in the mood to say anything with Nancy Bailey there, but, and I wanted to point this out to my fellow board members, about communication with the public, because Nancy Bailey, in my opinion, should really be commended because what she did going back to last year, back to school night, she is the faculty advisor for FCL LA. So during back-to-school night, when you make your three- to five-minute presentation of what the class is going to be all about, since she was also the faculty advisor, what she did was, she mentioned the organization she was the faculty advisor to, and she explained how it was differentiated and how being in this club was good for the students. And the fact that she proactively engaged with the public and added this to her presentation benefited my child because this was an organization I had no idea of its existence, nor did my kids, and it was something I was able to bring home and introduce to my kids. And my son ended up joining the club, so I think that was a prime example of a student engaging with the public and educating the public and, you know, the parents. Because even though during orientation you have all the different clubs present in the cafeteria, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the parents are not aware of the clubs, and the kids get overwhelmed with all the choices, and they may not know what's so good about any particular club. So I think that's just a prime example, and, you know, it's something to think about when the faculty has back-to-school night. Maybe they could, you know, that's something else where they could expose people to some positive information that other people may not know. And then the other thing with communication that I wanted to point out, which I think's been great in the last year is that I have a senior and a sophomore at Marlborough on Ed. However, the last ten or thirteen years, every single day when I ask them how school was, they was giving the same answer like, "You did nothing, right?" So I really had no idea what they put up to. But now with Twitter, Catherine D., she's a science teacher at Marlborough High School, whenever her classes do something really interesting, she goes on Twitter and posts pictures of what's going on. And as a parent and actually as a taxpayer, it made me feel good that our taxpayers are going to some of the things that kids are doing, like my son has zoology, and he'll tell me, "Oh, you dissected this, you dissected that." But when she puts the pictures on Twitter of the kids actually dissecting crayfish and all these different animals, you know, when you can see it, it really gives you a sense of what our taxpayer dollars are going for, and I could actually see what my kids do in school, which I never would have known. So I just wanted to point that out because I didn't point it out at the strategic planning meeting of two great examples of faculty members engaging with the public and educating parents. So I think they should both get the rose.
Yeah, and they will, and I think that you've touched on, you know, a powerful medium, you know, Twitter in and of itself. Folks know that I'm a Twitter fan, and I think that, you know, with social media presence, the good far outweighs the bad, and I think it's a real powerful way to communicate. And, you know, my own four children, there's been a proliferation of their teachers using Twitter, and I find myself really being able to follow along with what is happening in the classroom. And I think a lot of our folks have moved down that path. We're certainly, we've increased our connectivity of kids collaborating outside of the classroom exponentially over the past year or so. I was in a computer lab today at Freo High School talking to students who were working on projects. I asked them to pull up what they were working on, and they could see what everybody else in the class was working on, and they were collaborating, and they were sharing that, and the teacher was communicating with them out, you know, through social media. So there's a powerful example of just more ways to connect to kids and connect to parents because the kids will tell you, "What did you learn today?" "Nothing." "What did you do?" "The same normal day." "When I was a kid, it was a normal day." And I go, "What's a normal day?" And they go, "Well, you know, Dad, a normal day." And, okay, there's no descriptors there to anything. So I think that any of the ways that our faculty staff use to engage parents are powerful.
I want to interject one thing about that evening also. I was impressed with the students that were selected and how they view their assessments. Teachers have their own view, initiatives have their view. I work at a college, so, you know, we think everything's perfect, but the students and how they feel about assessment is a little bit different. Some of the teachers that were there that night, the initiatives, it was lovely to hear what the kids had to say, so I enjoyed listening to their opinions, their instruction, how they're assessed. So that was very interesting.
Yeah, and one of the things that we've been really deliberate about, Mr. Bruno, in this planning process is that when we have... So there were specific students selected to participate in that evening, but when we've run multiple student groups at the various high schools, we have been very careful... high schools, we have been very careful to randomly select those kids, to make sure that we just pull them from very diverse classrooms, very diverse experiences, so that we don't have any of the group think on the feedback where, you know, maybe you're talking to kids that are really connected to school in powerful ways and everything's rosy, you know, we've truly just been, we've used a random selection as frequently as possible to make sure that, and this is in addition to the survey data, but to make sure that we're trying to talk to students who are all having different experiences within our system. That concludes my report. We can call the auditors up for their annual presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
You want me over here?
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Swisher, I'm a part of a self-including company. I'm joined this evening by A.J. Zabine, who is the manager on the job, who conducted the day-to-day operations of our audit that just concluded. I'll start by saying this is A.J.'s first time being the manager on the job, we switched out the manager, kind of a little bit of a fresh look this year at the district. As you all probably know, the results of our audit are contained in two reports that you get. One is a small report called the Orchard Management Report, and the larger of the two is the Confiscant and Financial Report, the CAFR, that has all the numbers in it. The first report I'll start with is the Management Report. That is a report that is required by the State of New Jersey, it's part of education, and indeed they ask us to report on various areas of internal controls, compliance, and financial reporting, like for instance administrative practices, financial planning, school purchasing, school food services, student activities, et cetera. This is also the place that we find any comments or recommendations that we have as a result of our audit, and have the report that we don't have any files this year, which is excellent. The CAFR, the larger of the two reports, in the front of the report is the Opinion on the Financial Statement, and that is really what you're paying us to do, is to render an opinion on your financial statements. Your business office prepares financial records, and then you take them actually, it's interesting, it's real regional, you actually prepare the CAFR. Our firm does thirty-five school districts, and you're the only one that prepares the entire CAFR, soup to nuts, and you ask us to then look at that CAFR, and look at the underlying records, and render an opinion as to whether the CAFR is free from material mistake. That opinion, the best opinion that you get is an unmodified opinion, which I'm happy to report as well that the district did attain this year as well. But again, it's very rare, I've been doing this for thirty years, and I've never really had an entire CAFR handed to me the last two years. I've had that at both John and Trish Smith, who's out there with the new audience, which should be very proud of us and a very nice job, very minimal adjustments at the end, right? Okay, so that's a real feather in the cap for the district. The other thing that I'd like to talk about when I come in and do this presentation is where the district stands financially at the end of the year and where your surplus is. And your surplus is very flat, okay, year over year, you're down very slightly, not even enough to really notice. You've got about thirty-two million dollars in surplus at the end of the year. It sounds like a big number, I'm going to take a moment to go through the various components of that surplus and kind of explain them to you a little bit. First component, and these numbers come off of the schedule C1, and reported, you do look at the report in detail, I really advise the C1 of the last page, which is page one hundred, but in that, in my eyes, I'm going to test you right now. But that is, it's a great report, it's scheduled, it shows you the revenues, the expansions in the district budget, and how they performed during the course of the year. At the end, on page one hundred, you'll check, see a recapitulation of the surplus, which I'm about to go over with you. So that thirty-two million dollars, you have excess surplus designated for subsequent years expenditures, about ten million dollars. Excess surplus is what the State Department of Education has determined is anything in excess of two percent of your operating expenditures. If anything in excess of that two percent, you are required to give back as tax relief to the public two years hence. In other words, whatever you had at June thirty, twenty sixteen, it's used in the eighteen budget, seventeen and nineteen, et cetera. So at the end of the year this year, you had ten million dollars in excess surplus from the prior year. That money is being used to support the budget as tax relief in twenty eighteen. The results of this year's audit, there's excess surplus as well, about eleven million eighty. I'll take a moment and excess surplus just to tell you, two percent, that number is picked by the State Department of Education, it's fairly arbitrary in my opinion, it doesn't take into consideration the size of any particular district, okay? Same thing that we go for, Colsecate to Wey, we go for Freehold Regional, two very different districts. Okay, so that means that the eleven million dollars has to be used at minimum when you go to do your twenty nineteen budget. And it's very consistent with previous years in the districts as well, I'm going to add that. You also have money in three reserves, maintenance, capital, and emergency reserve. Respectively, you have about plus one point five million dollars in your maintenance reserve, three point three in cap reserve, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your emergency reserve. The Department of Education, again, allows us to put money into these restricted reserves, restricted for very specific purposes, pretty self-explanatory, maintenance reserves for maintenance costs, capital, emergency, pretty straightforward. The capital reserve in particular, I'll take a moment on, very important to make sure you have a strong capital reserve, we're able to put some money in there this year. You folks passed a resolution at the end of the year, you're able to see this capital some more money. CAP reserve is a great thing to have, as you're probably all aware, over the past couple of years, you're able to take advantage of SDA grants given out by the state, where the state will match forty percent of whatever we put up for capital projects. That twenty percent, generally speaking in most districts, comes from capital reserve, so that if you don't have a strong capital reserve and you can't put up your share, you can't take advantage of the state and their grant programs to come around, say maybe once every five to seven years. So also it's there to be, to take care of, like, small capital projects, take care of during the course of the year outside of referendum. So it's excellent, always good to have a strong capital reserve. Finishing up, we designated additional five hundred thousand dollars for support of the twenty eighteen budget, which accompanies the ten million dollars I referenced earlier. We also have one point three million dollars per side at June thirty, twenty seventeen for encumbrances. Those are orders that are outstanding at the end of the year, they roll over to the succeeding year budget, and then they're usually liquidated in ninety days of the succeeding year. Last but not least, you have an aside surplus of about four million dollars. That's the two percent, that's your free balance, in other words, if you're using it, that's the two percent that the state will allow you to keep. So what you're seeing here is very consistent in your surplus, which is excellent. And also, the district is in good financial position, it's all financial position. As you look forward, should you be considering referendum, et cetera, and you do consider going out and issuing bonds. The strength of your surplus will help you in terms of getting a good bond rating, which in turn will get you lower interest rates should you go to issue bonds in the near term. So again, the district is in good financial condition. The records, again, there was no comments or recommendations in the report, credit to the business office and to administration in general. I'll stop for a moment and take any questions you might have on either one of the two reports.
Just one question, I should know this, but I don't. The maintenance, the cap, the extra, the extra funds, that's not included in the ten million dollars? That's extra?
No, okay, so what basically, it's calculating the excess surplus, okay? The four point two is where you basically start, okay? That's the two percent, okay? And you're going to take out all the other components, except for the excess surplus for the current year. Once you take out all the other ex, extra components other than the excess surplus for the current year, you have that four million dollars that you were able to keep, the two percent, the rest is excess surplus, so yes, to answer your questions, it's not.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Again, I'd like to thank the business office in particular, Trish over here, bears most of our slings and arrows, and does a fine job, keeps up their work currently, and deals with us and with the debt by a thousand cuts. We're basically in the district for the better part of a month, they're trying to do their normal jobs, and they're also trying to deal with us, and it's a credit to administration with them. And again, if you have any questions, the reports are large, particularly the CAFR. If any questions, certainly, let Sean know, and we'd be happy to come out if you need us in that respect.
Thank you, John. Nice work, good additions to the firm. A.J., Mr. Zabine did a good job, very professional and logical job out there. And Bored, you know, I don't get a lot of opportunity to comment on some of the operational infrastructure of the district, but there's, there's an infrastructure in the area of finance in the district, and I think that is the business office, and an audit is a look back, it's for the year ended, so it already happened, and it's a review of their work over the course of that year. Trish Smith, who's the administrator of finance, runs a point on the, on the audit and financial reporting and compliance issues for the district, and as we've come to expect, clean audits, excellent job, complete set of financial reports presented to the auditors for audit, and it's just outstanding work to everybody in that office, and I just wanted to recognize that a lot again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Boyce, and thanks, credit to your office, credit to Trish. You know, I've worked in other districts, I've been here seven years now, and I can say unequivocally that each and every year we have the cleanest audit year, period, and it's, it's a, it's a credit to the folks in the office, and I think the expertise of the office, you know, Mr. Boyce is phenomenal what he does, and Trish has been an excellent addition the past few years, so we are, as a superintendent of schools, you know right away that the greatest unknown when you come into a district is the financial house on the financial side of things, and that's not, you have to make sure that that section of the school district, that's the basis for everything, it has to run smoothly, it has to be run well, and it's run incredibly well in this district, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Super.
Thanks very much. Happy holidays, everybody.
We also have a curriculum committee report from earlier this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. So we covered a lot of material today, and in the spirit of final season, I'll be reviewing the Spark. So first off, our school programs that we're developing are building capacity for career pathways training. So what's really going to make these pathways click are the relationships that we have with, with the people who have left his alma mater. We've been fortunate enough to work with someone who we consider a genuine representative of, his name is Ken Lehman, and he's a native of Marlborough. He's also studied computer science at Stanford, did some entrepreneurial work here in New Jersey, down at the Labs, and started with video, and has since moved onto Facebook, where he is probably a software manager. Now, one of the problems with teaching computer science in a more orthodox manner is that the material that is found in the textbooks is often outdated by the time a third or fourth student needs to study. So you really need to have someone who's going to tell us where the hot topics are going to be, someone who's on pulse of technologies that are going to be in demand should for the future. Now, one of the things that I'm most excited about in this program is that students will have the opportunity to work with, to work on tangible products, and first to get an idea of where their strengths and interests lie, but eventually to serve actual clients. And that's what really gets you, gets interested in what we're doing, taking them through the entire product cycle, giving them some improvements, and having them develop something that they can show off to their friends, their parents, and eventually college admissions and all this sort of stuff. Another pathway that is under development is the health sciences career. Again, here we're also fortunate to find partners in both libraries and central state. With the latter, students will be able to shadow professionals in central state, which could be an incredibly valuable experience for them, not just to show students what they might want to become, but also to clue them into what they might not want to become while they're still relatively easy to change course. Now, moving on to our international baccalaureate program at Howe High School. First off, as an ID student myself, only five years, but I just want to reiterate how excited I am that the district is pursuing, I mean, for its own students. You know, people often complain about how public education is inundated with teaching to the test, and in my opinion, the thing about adopting an ID curriculum is that it's absolutely involves teaching to the test. The difference is, the test itself and the preparation for it lends itself to the critical thinking and information synthesis, so crucial for new college students. Now, at Howe, we have our first cohort of future ID students in twenty nineteen, this upcoming year. These students will not formally begin their ID diploma program junior year, but they will be participating in some of our pre-ID courses to make sure that they are absolutely prepared for success in the diploma program. And that preparation really is crucial for establishing a healthy ID program. As I'm sure many of educators here know, ID has become incredibly popular these past few years, but many districts have executed it haphazardly. We're not going to let that happen, and the curriculum writing implementation, and implementation workshops, so a long way to ensure that that's the case, that our teachers actually have some time to familiarize themselves and experiment with the curriculums before you coin them in the classroom. And this goes just not for our ID curriculum, but all across the district, all right. And that is my report for today.
Okay, December eleventh, oh, sorry, yeah, December eleventh, again, I mean it's mixed up. We had a finance committee meeting, and most of the meeting was devoted to presentation of the audit report, which obviously everyone just heard about. The only two issues that we were discussed were the wastewater plant, that's in this school. You need a licensed operator to operate a wastewater treatment plant. This plant was built with the building back in nineteen ninety-eight. You'll see on your agenda tonight, I, too, were actually affording a contract to Pinoni for engineering services to actually operate this plant for us. There were three bids that came in, and our administration interviewed all three firms, and the ninety-plus thousand dollar award that we're awarding tonight definitely went is going to the firm with the most institutional knowledge of this plant, and can do the best job. You may know that we do have a deal with Freehold Township Engineering to work on some of the infrastructure in the school, but the wastewater plant's really outside the realm of what Freehold Township can provide, that's why we have to go to an outside contractor. And then the other thing that we were notified about is that Mr. Boyce had a meeting with Comptonia about what they're going to need for unit lunch next year with the block scheduling, and eventually at some point we're going to have to go out and bid for things such as lunch tables for next year. And that was it, just three topics covered at the meeting.
Public participation, general?
So the first thing I wanted to say was how happy I was to get the letter in the mail that Howe was going to be participating in the ID program. I had heard about it the first time when my oldest, my middle daughter, who was looking at Triottet High School, and they'd never heard of it before, and I thought it was really exciting, and when I saw it come to Freehold Township, I thought that that was wonderful, and I think the communication at that time was, you know, eventually it would be going out to some other schools, so very glad to hear that my oldest school is the next school that will be offering that program, as I have a son who will be attending high school next year. Am I allowed to ask questions, or do I just raise concerns in my seat? My question was, when you mentioned that there were pre-ID classes, are those offered, like, would you take that in exchange for an elective?
Potentially, yes. So the, each of the ID programs, the Howe program would be slightly different than the Township program, but you will be on, you will be, I don't want to use the term pigeonhole, but you will have to take certain classes in order to get yourself set for the ID course in the eleventh grade. I don't know offhand what those specific courses are just yet, and, you know, but they will potentially be at the expense of an elective.
So really a student coming in would have to sort of recognize themselves, like a faculty identification and something?
The guidance counselor would sit down with them, and the coordinator, Mr. Brogman's there, I mean, I would say call him, and he'll talk you through everything specifically.
I was just curious about how it would work if you're, you know, addressing the diploma piece, and it doesn't really start until junior year, but you have to, you have to tee yourself up.
Yeah, so it's a multi-year process, so when we implemented it in Township, you know, an ID program in and of itself takes three or four years to get off the ground with the teacher training and the course progression. The pre-ID, all that really is for the student- The pre-ID, all that really is for the students is exposing them to some of the processes that they're going to be expected to do in that junior year, so there's no... You're not limited in the sense, if something happens and somebody comes into the building in tenth grade and says, "Well, wait a minute, I've had a change of heart, I want to take a look at this." I mean, I think we're flexible when it starts, but if you're asking if you're locked in.
No, only that you really kind of had to come in with the idea that it might be something that you want.
Not necessarily, you know, it could be something, I think if the tenth grader suddenly sort of had the tendency that they were very interested in getting into the pre-ID program, there'd be a pathway for them to get into that.
And the other questions that I had tonight had to do with the lower enrollment at the learning centers that you had mentioned a little bit, a little bit this evening. And it kind of concerned me when I was attending some of the open houses and talking to current students, parents of current students. I'm wondering exactly, you know, what caused that, were there fewer kids testing? Or did they offer the same amount of seats, and then fewer kids took them? Is there less preparation, less kids prepared coming in?
So no to fewer kids testing, no to kids being less prepared. The specific anomaly was medical sciences this year, and I think seventeen students that were accepted into that program, there were a greater number of those acceptances this year, almost double the number taken, accepted into the county vocational program than we've seen in the past. Now, they, in speaking to them, when I asked them if they were enlarging their classes, their answer to me was no, they just took more of our students this particular year. So the medical sciences incoming freshman class this year is an anomaly from the other classes.
I had heard that Science and Engineering is at seventeen as well.
Science and Engineering is at seventeen, I mean, they've ranged from that up to about twenty-three or twenty-four, so Science and Engineering and Medical Sciences would be the ones that were hit when they opened up larger classes in some of those other programs, which happened. And they can't explain it to me, they claim they didn't take more kids, they took a much higher percentage of Freehold Regional students than students across the county this year.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So in other words, if you lined up the towns in Monmouth County, our percentages dwarf other towns in the county in terms of what they accept. The county folks are bound to accept one student from each municipality, and then it's an open process. This year, and I don't know why, and nor did they explain to me other than to say that they hadn't done anything differently, and they didn't take more students, but we had the numbers to clearly demonstrate that. More Freehold Regional students were accepted than what they've ever accepted before, at the expense of the rest of the county.
Right, okay. So if they're clearly, if they're just following the numbers game, I guess that would say that the kids that are feeding into the high school district are doing better relative to other?
That's what it indicates, whatever their criteria is. I mean, I think we had somewhere around one hundred and sixty or one hundred and seventy kids apply to Medical Sciences, and somewhere around the same number applied to Science and Engineering, so the applicants were there. You know, one of the things that we also did this year, we streamlined our application process, and we took a real close look at what some of our requirements were beginning in the seventh grade for students, and how that might impact students in the application process in our context. In other words, were we putting up artificial boundaries to kids that might be accepted otherwise? And so we've taken a deep dive on that, and we tweaked a few things in terms of what we're looking at and coming from the middle school, because the middle schools that send to us have very different philosophies around mathematics. And sometimes that plays a factor in where those students are eligible to be accepted in ninth grade, because they have to have a certain math to do it. And that was one of the things that we took a hard look at this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just two quick amendments for the agenda before you ask for a motion. President G six, the item for Marissa Hazel. If, please note the change from Analk High School to Colsnag High School. And then also in addition, J ten, approval of settlement agreement. Being resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education approves the settlement agreement number two oh one six dash two three eight four eight, on file in the Office of Special Services, so put those two amendments.
I'd like to take, I need a motion to twenty.
Motion.
Agenda G one to K two.
Eight seconds.
Maybe a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Estol.
Yes.
Mr. Corle.
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhausen.
Yes.
Mrs. Slav.
Yes.
Mr. Messenger.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Or Mrs. Sitter.
Yes.
All right, any old business?
So it's my final board meeting, and I just want to point out how to be a coincidence that my final board meeting is at Fort Smith, so. Now, I was never actually a student here, but I did grow up across the fence, where I always knew from the lab speakers whenever I did a group rehearsal touchdown, so I do consider myself one of them. I'm gonna keep this shorter than my curriculum report, except that I'm incredibly grateful to so many people that have made these past three years a wonderful time as a Freehold Regional Board of Education. Mr. Heskey, my first president, Mrs. Sitter, my current president, Mr. Messenger, my brother, the marco. I'm still twenty-three, so I still feel like maybe I could call you this. Of course, I'd also like to thank Mr. Sampson, you know, a lot of superintendents out there are complacent with keeping the ship afloat, although Mr. Sampson's always thoroughly invested in making sure that it's pointed in the right direction. And helping him do so is the amazing administrative team, including especially Mr. Boyce, Mrs. Hazel, and Mrs. Howell. I'd also like to thank Mr. Tiscon, and the rest of the board, for all my, I've learned so much. I've been a student for most of these past three years, and my time here has been just as informative as any course of education, I think. And then I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the wonderful people that Metro Lord and Hamtram. There was actually one board meeting that lasted, well, it took about five hours to get to you, seven hours to get back to us, and the public session was about twenty minutes. It's a simple one, but really, I just want to say that it's been a distinct privilege to serve a local or such an exemplary district. And as one final act to see the tax pair money, I'm gonna remind the Colsnag board member, Compton, a elect, to return the card that he took three years ago. Thank you.
Well, thank you to it, we were gonna wish you well, and we were gonna announce that we shall have a board meeting, but I wish you all the best for the rest of the regional life, in anything and everything that you do. It was a pleasure working with you, and we look forward to working with you next. But I wish you, I wish you well. Thank you.
Yeah, Vincent, all the best, you know, I had the good fortune of being involved with the Estol family in one way or the other for the past six-plus years at this point, so I got to witness you actually, from a high school student, moving on to unbelievable things. You know, you're at the very beginning stages of what's gonna be an unbelievable life, and I think that you are uniquely talented to really do some exceptional things in this world, so I'm looking forward to you going forth and really starting to embrace those talents. So all the best.
Any new business? I'd like to motion. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, who said that?
Susan.
All in.
I just wanted to mention something that was already mentioned, and then question.
Oh, yeah.
Hang on, you know, what, sorry, Mrs. Slav, I forgot about that. So Ms. Canario will be resigning her seat from the Board of Education, she's relocating. The board will go through the process with Mr. Tiscon formally posting the vacant seat. We will post, and someone will be appointed to that term until the next election, and then someone will, and then there will be a ballot election for the two-year unexpired term. But all shifting very quickly, so just found out about that.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, for adjournments.